Welcome, everyone. I now call the May 7th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kurd?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alkabra?
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember Manke, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently and mute your microphone when not speaking. First up is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to public engagement opportunities. We have the Bothell Way Northeast Multimodal Improvements Project Open House on Wednesday, May 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Lidl House at the Park at Bothell Landing. Refreshments and childcare will be available. Startup and Small Business Co-Working Day, Thursday, May 16th, 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. in council chambers. Hosted by Startup 425, this is a chance for Bothell business owners and entrepreneurs to spend the day working in each other's company. And the Spring Waste Mobile is going to be here on May 17th through 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Utah Bothell Campus 18115, Campus Way Northeast. You can drop off a wide variety of household hazardous waste products for easy, safe, and free disposal. We have two different proclamations. The first one is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed annually in May to recognize and celebrate the immeasurable contributions that generations of Asian Americans have made to American history, society, and culture. And whereas is one of the fastest-growing racial and ethnic groups in the United States and particularly in Bothell, Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities represent a multitude of ethnicities, languages, and experiences that enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have been part of the history of the United States for over 200 years, contributing to the economy, culture, education, politics, art, science, and technological developments despite institutional and systemic injustices, unjust working conditions, prejudice, and discrimination. And whereas, though we take this time to celebrate Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we must also recognize that the Asian American community is exceptionally diverse in national origin and ethnicity and cultural practices and cannot be treated as a monolith. And whereas the City of Bothell is committed to building robust relationships with our Asian American community partners and community-based organizations, including the Greater Seattle Korean Association. And whereas, specific to Korean Americans, an influential part of the overall AAPI community, the City of Bothell recognizes and appreciates their impacts and contributions to not only the City of Bothell, but the Puget Sound region, including their economy, social, political, and cultural influences, which has enriched our community overall. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Bothell, and call upon all Bothell community members to learn more about AAPI history and heritage and work to ensure that anti-Asian xenophobia, hatred, and discrimination have no home in Bothell. And I believe we have Sam Sim here to accept.
And I see you're ready to say a few words.
Go for it. Just go for it.
Okay.
Yeah. First of all, thank you, City of Bothell. Mayor Mason and the Bothell City Council, we're very grateful from the AAPI community. Also, I want to recognize the City of Bothell Outreach Committee, Gabby Kuna, and also the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce. Shout out to you guys. My name is Sam Sim, and I'm the Vice President of Greater Seattle Korean Association and also the Vice President of America Korea United Society. I've been a Snohomish County resident and Bothell resident for over 20 years. Our family immigrated to Honolulu when I was less than one to seek a better life in 1972. As a child growing up as a Korean in the U.S. in the early 1970s and 1980s, I struggled not only with my identity in terms of identifying who I was, but also was a target of indiscriminate and direct racism. Because of this, I decided that I would assimilate to the best of my ability to try to fit in with everyone else who did not share my same ethnicity. I just didn't want to be heard anymore, and so desired to be fit in. In fact, it grew to a sense of shame of being who I was as a Korean by ethnicity, and this was prevalent for the good part of my youth. It wasn't until our family moved to Seattle in 1990, where I attended University of Washington as a freshman, go Dawgs, when I finally discovered who I really was. There was a class, Asian American Studies 206. There, in that class, I heard the term bilingual for the very first time. We learned that I was part of a growing group of Asians immigrating to the U.S. as part of a second and third wave and growing rapidly, as we had just mentioned before. In this class, as I mentioned, I heard the term bicultural for the very first time and realized I was, in fact, part of this distinct population group. So therein we realized that we are the children of two distinct cultures, Asian and American. My sense of shame, as a result, turned to a sense of pride for the first time. I'm living proof that as an Asian American and as a Korean American, we can leverage the fact that we are bicultural. In other words, we have two hearts that beat brightly, one for our mother country and one for our native country here in America, and that we can use this to bless our surrounding communities much more with our experiences. It is also now, because of AAPI Month, that this newfound sense of pride can be officially recognized and respected in public. As a youth, I never thought that I would live to see this day. However, it is because of this proclamation that I realize that my goal and vision, to be an impetus to bridge our communities, grows brightly within me and compels me even more to serve our community as a public servant. Thank you again, Bothell City Council, and also to the City of Bothell, also to Greater Seattle Korean Association, America Korea United Society, and all AAPI community groups in this area for having the heart, mind, vision, and foresight to make AAPI proclamation a reality. And Mayor Mason, I took you out for bubble tea, but I want to take all you guys out for bubble tea. So on that note, I'm going to invite Chairman of, Chairwoman of Greater Seattle Korean Association, Alyssa Na, and she's going to repeat pretty much what I said in Korean as a symbolic gesture. And by intention, we did not have an interpreter, but it's essentially what I said, and she's going to repeat that in Korean. And one more, huge thank you. I'm not sure if you noticed, but on the City of Bothell DEI portion of the website, I submitted an article regarding the significance of AAPI Month, which was also published in Korean as well for the very first time. Bothell is leading the way. Thank you so much. Now, let me introduce Chairman Alyssa Na.
Thank you so much for city council members for giving me this opportunity to speak in Korean to honor the proclamation of AAPI Heritage Month. 오늘 저희 광역 시애틀 한인회가 메이슨 톰슨 보도 시장님과 함께 AAPI Heritage Month 선언문을 발표하게 되어 영광입니다. 5월은 미국에 사는 아시안 태평양계 미국인들의 다양한 문화를 기리고 그들이 지역 사회에 주는 활력과 나라 발전에 기여한 공로를 인정하고 축하하는 아시안 태평양 문화 유사에는 다릅니다. 아시아계 미국인들은 역사에 늘 있어왔던 이민자에 대한 차별, 부당한 환경과 조건들을 이겨내고 정치, 의료, 교육, 기술, 스포츠 문화 등 여러 분야에서 중요한 역할을 해내고 있었습니다. 이 모두의 노력과 수고가 우리 커뮤니티에 나아가 이 나라를 더욱 특별하게 만들어 나아가 있다고 생각하고 저 역시 아시아계 미국인의 한 사람으로서 자랑스럽게 생각합니다. 샘께서 말씀하신 것처럼 서로 다른 뿌리를 가지고 있다는 것은 아시아와 미국이라는 두 문화의 혜택을 함께 누릴 수 있는 특권입니다. 이에 대한 자부심과 정체성을 가지고 5월 한 달에 한달 특별히 아시안 태평양계 미국인으로서 모두가 어우러져 통합된 커뮤니티로 서로를 경로하고 축하하며 건강히 발전하는 기회가 되기를 바랍니다. 감사합니다. 땡큐.
Can we have one more?
Sure. And after that, do you want to get a picture?
Picture now?
With the council?
Can we have one more?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. You'll get your chance to take it, don't worry.
I'm not in a rush. I just, I wasn't sure if you wanted a picture.
So we'll now have Ron Kim, the Treasurer of America Korea United Society, just say a few words.
Thank you for the opportunity. I don't even live in Bothell, but I'm here to support Sam. He's a tremendous impact to the community, so I'm here to support his effort. Thank you, Bothell City Council members and Mayor Thompson for recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month, particularly to the Korean American community. This formal proclamation is a landmark acknowledgement for Korean Americans who have long contributed to the mosaic of culture within our community, yet have often been considered merely a subculture. By officially recognizing the significance of Asian American and Pacific Islanders, Bothell City Council is validating these communities' rich history and contributions, affirming their rightful place in the public sphere of Bothell. This recognition opens doors that were once firmly closed, creating opportunities for equal participation in all sectors of public life, from community engagement and business to education and politics. It provides a platform for Asian Americans to pursue their dreams and ambitions on a level playing field, enriching our communities' diversity and vibrancy. This proclamation resonates beyond our city limits, reaching Puget Sound and setting a precedent for inclusive and recognition that inspire other communities to follow suit. Thank you for leading the way in celebrating the diversity that strengthens our community for helping to ensure the contribution of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are recognized and valued. We look forward to continued progress and inclusion in our beautiful Bothell city. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys want to get a picture with council?
Absolutely.
All right, let's do it.
Is this your proclamation?
Next proclamation is for Affordable Housing Week. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as "housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities." And whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas, united to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. And whereas the City of Bothell endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so firmly recommends itself to ensuring and that all people in Bothell live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, do hereby proclaim the week of May 13th through 17th, 2024, as Affordable Housing Week. And I believe we have Michael Troyer here to accept. There we go.
Thank you. Yeah, I love Sam too. Good evening, council. My name is Michael Troyer, and I am a resident of Lake Forest Park and a member of the North Urban Services Human Services Alliance. NUSA is a coalition of area providers, cities, faith organizations, school districts, and residents who advocate for a strong and accessible human services system in our North King County communities. We would like to thank you for proclaiming May 13th to 17th as Affordable Housing Week and for your recognition of the urgent need for affordable homes in our community. The Department of Commerce estimates, projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200,000 net new housing units for households at or below 80% area median income. In our north-end communities, this housing crisis is evident. There is not enough housing options and certainly not enough affordable options. We know that King County currently expects to build 5,800 affordable housing units, but only 2,000 of those units are going to the 0% to 30% area median income. Too many of our youth do not have a stable place to call home, and too many families are struggling just to stay housed. More and more families are considered housing insecure because they're spending more than a third of their income on rent. Our goal for Affordable Housing Week is not only to call attention to the level of need, but also to highlight the policy solutions and important work that is currently being done to make a difference. Everyone benefits from affordable housing, including neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. In closing, with an invitation, we are hosting a virtual lunch and learn program of all of our community elected members on May 14th from noon to 1:00 p.m. titled Affordable Housing 101, where we'll explore our regional housing landscape and better understand affordable housing concepts and terms. We, so many times, we get lost in the terminology of that and just get lost. So you can learn more about this if you simply just Google Affordable Housing Week 2024. We hope that you will continue to support affordable housing with all the tools available to you, and our experience is that with committed leadership and significant public investment, we can produce housing that is affordable for families with modest means in our community. Thank you again for taking the time to work on this issue.
And thank you for all of the work that you do at NUSA as well. Moving on to public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing, as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note the council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
We do not have anybody signed up but Mr. Terry Losh.
We did it.
Mr. Losh, if you'll go to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Affordable housing is something that, you know, we can't legislate, we can't dictate the cost of housing. What we can do is work with our planning commissions to encourage the participation of architects and builders to build housing that would be, would fit that description. And my recommendation would be that we build smaller units that people can buy, not just small apartments, but small condominiums. Attractive for a developer because he gets his money back in a relatively short amount of time, and he's out of the picture. Attractive for a home buyer because it gives them an initial stake in the capital formation process that is vital to all of our needs in the long term. So what's happening now is that because of Amazon and all this marketing online, a tremendous amount of retail space is going abandoned or in poor repair and probably would be ideally suited for development in strip malls or, say, at Alderwood, there's already been some housing development to take up some of that space. I think we should look for surplus properties on our own ballot sheet and encourage developers to build units that are from maybe 600 to 1,000 square feet that would fit the needs of a small family and, of course, the initial home buyer, and it would be affordable in a price per square foot. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. That is all I have. If anybody else in the audience wishes to speak, please step to the podium and state your name. All I have.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our first agenda bill of the night, I guess our only agenda bill of the night. Agenda Bill 24074, resolution...
Reports.
Oh.
Reports and consent.
I flipped too far ahead in this piece of paper. Please forgive me, thank you. Next up is reports. We have a city manager report. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It's nice to be here this evening. I have two staff briefings, but before we move into the staff briefings, I want to give just a quick thank you to the community. We held two community comp plan open houses last week, and both of those were attended by almost 100 people in total. And so for the viewing public and others that are still wanting to give their feedback on the environmental impact statement, which has a 30-day comment period, those 30 days are up in 11 days. So if you want to comment on the EIS, now is that opportunity. And on the draft comprehensive plan, public hearings will start at the Planning Commission in June. So if you do want to comment on the EIS, there are two ways in which you can do that. You can go to the EngageBothell.com site. It provides links, it provides the draft plan, you just have to click the button and type away. The other option you have is to send an email, and you can send that email into eisimaginebothell@bothellwad.gov. So again, comp plan, that EIS is coming to a close here in 11 days, and so we encourage the public to continue to provide feedback. We have two staff reports this evening. The first has already moved to the table, so thank you, Becky and Kate. Tonight, we have our first touch at the top-line survey results from our recent community budget survey. It is our first touch tonight. We do anticipate that we'll continue to do deeper dives as we move forward into the budget process. So with that, I will turn this over to Becky Range, our Assistant City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Tonight, I do have the honor of introducing Kate Langsdorf, who is our new Communications Officer here at the City of Bothell. So Mayor and council members, as she mentioned, we do just want to give you a quick update on these initial results of this community budget survey. As you know, community engagement is woven all throughout your 2040 vision and priorities. But even if you didn't tell us that community engagement was really important and a big priority for staff, we would do it anyways because we know that if we want to do our jobs really well, we need to involve the public in as much decision-making as we can. And so it's really important for us to ask the public when we have important things happening. You see us doing a lot more surveys recently and striving to do more inclusive and broad community engagement. As we enter the budget process, it's really important to do a broad community budget survey. It is just one piece of the budget development and one way that the public can inform us, but it's really, really important. It's important for this particular survey to be a statistically valid survey. So what we did a few months ago, we engaged in a contract with PRR. PRR is an independent research firm in our area that's very credible and does really great work. So in just a moment, we'll be turning the microphone over to two very important partners that we've been working with on this project, Anne Frugé and Freya Liu. And for the last few months, they've been working with us to make sure that the community survey is done very, very well. So at this point, I will turn it over to PRR, and they'll give us a quick update.
Okay, thank you all for having us, and thank you, Becky, for that introduction. My name is Dr. Anne Frugé. I'm the Associate Research Director at PRR and the project manager on this work. And tonight, I am here with my colleague, Dr. Freya Liu.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Freya Liu, and I am a researcher with PRR. I'm the research lead and the deputy project manager for this survey.
Okay, so as Becky previewed, we wanted to present to you tonight the first cut of the preliminary results from the community survey, starting with a brief background of this project, then talking through the approach we used and the methods, in particular, the recruitment that we used. And then we'll move into the key findings from the survey, which cover perceptions, community priorities, and of course, satisfaction with services and amenities. So as you're all well aware, every two years, the city conducts this survey so that the council has public feedback from community members around their satisfaction with services and as well their priorities for future investments. So in 2024, PRR conducted this online survey to inform decisions around the 2025, 2026 budget priorities. The survey was available in English, simplified Chinese, and Spanish. The objectives were to understand how people think and feel about the city, its role, and the services provided. We also wanted to identify budget priorities within the community as well as hear from the public about their satisfaction regarding services and amenities. And of course, we wanted to lay a groundwork of solid research methods for valid data collection, which will allow you to act on community feedback as well. So again, it's an online survey. We fielded in March. We received 1,103 responses. 1,060 responses were in English. We heard from 14 survey respondents who took the survey in Spanish and 29 respondents took the survey in simplified Chinese. In terms of recruitment, we started with two rounds of a household mailing to a random sample of 8,000 households within city limits. So we sent an invitation postcard and then one week later, we followed up with a reminder postcard directing people to the web version of the survey. We also combined this with outreach through community-based organizations and through channels with the City of Bothell. In terms of the analysis, what you'll see previewed here, and then there is a full report that complements it, we calculated frequencies for all survey questions. So you can see the responses to all the survey questions. And then we have a few descriptive statistics that summarize key questions. We also conducted statistical analysis to understand what relationships might exist between key demographic factors such as age, income, race, gender, and ethnicity with survey responses to understand patterns and relationships there. At this point, I'll turn it over to Freya to talk through the key findings.
So I'm going to present our key findings from the survey. So our survey asked a series of questions and we organized the questions in four different areas. General perception of Bothell, budget priorities, biggest issue facing Bothell today, and then also people's satisfaction with city services. So now I'm going to cover the key findings for each one of the four areas. People generally had positive perceptions about Bothell. 81% consider Bothell a good or excellent place to live. 80% would recommend Bothell to others, like including their friends and family. And 73% were pleased with the quality of the city services. Here, we found that respondents who identified as white were more likely to consider Bothell a good or excellent place to live. However, fewer residents, 61%, feel that they have opportunity to offer input in the city's decision-making process. And they're getting money's worth for their tax dollars at 56%. And then fewer believe Bothell is headed in the right direction at 54%. Here, we also found that people who identified as white were more likely to agree that they have opportunities to give input to the city's decision-making process or they're getting their money's worth for their tax dollars. Also, another interesting finding is that for the last three items, offer input, getting money's worth, and headed in the right direction, we found that there were 10% to 15% of respondents who chose don't know to the questions. So this finding might be important to consider for communication and awareness building. Next slide, please. In terms of budget priorities, we asked residents this question. Based on the city's current level of services, which of the following areas are the most important investments for the city to make with your tax dollars? Please select your top five choices. So these four items emerged as the top choices. Maintenance of roads, traffic lights and signs, parks, trails, open areas and gathering spaces, fire EMS and crisis responses, and police services. After we cover all the key findings on this page, I will show you more details about the budget priority question with a chart. Next slide, please. Oh yeah, here we are. And next, we also asked respondents in an open-ended question. In your opinion, what is the biggest issues that's facing Bothell today that the city should do something about over the next two years? So three main themes emerged from the data. First, residents were asking for balancing rapid growth and development with affordability and quality of life issues such as traffic congestion, not enough parking, not enough stores, not enough parks. Residents were also asking for more and sufficient public services and amenities. Respondents, they had concerns about public safety, potholes on the road, and traffic lights, and street lights, and insufficient public transit. Residents were also asking for, they were also interested in seeing more thoughtful and responsive governing with more intentional planning in development, more public engagement opportunities for the community to be involved in decision-making, and also better communications about increases in property tax. Next slide, please. Lastly, we also asked respondents for their satisfaction with different city services in seven broad categories. So participants rated their satisfaction on a scale of one to four, with one being very dissatisfied and four being very satisfied. In general, respondents were satisfied with services in public safety. Their average rating is 3.15 out of four. Services in environment, average rating is 2.99. And services in parks and trails, with the average rating 2.94. However, we did find some areas that could use some improvement. Specifically, these are the lowest rated items. We can see here, we have growth in both neighborhoods and downtown received really low rating. Affordable housing, 2.35. And also sidewalks, both along major roads and in neighborhoods, got low ratings. Next slide, please. So here is the chart for the, for budget priorities. There's a lot of information on this chart, but basically it shows the distribution of people's choices. So for example, if I can direct your attention to the top one item, maintenance of roads, potholes, traffic signs and traffic lights. So to interpret this item in the chart, basically for 62% of people, maintenance of roads and traffic signs and lights was among their top five budget concerns. But, sorry, top five budget priorities. So here, I highlighted the top seven items that were selected by 40% or more residents. You can see the services that were selected range in a variety of different aspects about infrastructure, built environment, safety, community gathering spaces, nature, and public services. So broadly speaking, these are the high priority items for Bothell residents. And then next, we asked a follow-up question. Because we asked them, if you have to just choose one among the top five that you choose, what is your absolute priority? Next slide, please. So when we asked that question, what is your top one out of the top five? You can see here, people's top concern out of their top five is maintenance of roads and police services. That being said, next slide, please. I want to direct your attention back to the highlighted seven top items because there is a holistic set of priorities for residents. And these are, there is this variety of issues that are important to people. While their top two are roads and police services. So that's all for our presentation today. Thank you for the opportunity to work on this survey project and also for the opportunity to present the findings to you all this evening. Thank you, and back to Becky.
Do you have any questions at this time?
Councilmember resigns.
Thank you for both the published information and the verbal information here. It's fascinating and I'm very impressed with the people of Bothell. They're very, we tend to be a very sensible, practical group of people, so that was interesting to see. I have a, and maybe you can tell me that it's not useful data, but I would be curious like in the top four or five things that people chose as their, what was important to them or what can be improved. I would love to see a breakdown between, I feel like, you know, we're a tale of two cities in one city. I would like to see what Snohomish County Canyon Park area, if there's something that's significantly different than the people who live closer to downtown and vice versa. But if that's information that could be had, I would love to see it.
Absolutely. We can look at that. It may already be in the draft report, but if not, I think that's pretty easy.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Along similar lines, I have some questions relating to, I know that there was two types of ways that you collected data. One was through the postcards and one was sort of like organic recruitment. And so can we see a breakdown, like a separation of the data based on the surveys that came through the postcards and then the surveys that came through like the snowball effect of people sharing the link around? And like, because one is designed and intended to be statistically significant for the community and the other one is still useful information, but I know that they are kept separate. And so the information that was presented to us tonight, is that, is that all of them combined or is this just the postcards?
It's both data sets combined. And the reason why they were presented together is they were studied and there was no statistical difference. Each time we do the survey, we do keep the data sets separate because we're always interested to see what happens with the online link versus the postcards. For this particular set, there was actually no statistical difference.
Even with demographics, like the demographics were pretty, pretty similar between each group?
I'm not sure, but we can actually get that information for you or make sure it's in the final report.
Great. Yeah, I would really love that. Thank you. And then another question I have is, can we tell, like, is there a way to understand how people interpret what they are thinking about or mean when they see items related to growth?
It's a great question. I think.
And maybe that's like a, like follow-up interviews kinds of things, like, right? It gets to be more.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
I think the overall survey is a big tool and a big piece of information for us. There are several areas that need to be investigated a little bit further. And if we look at the community survey results, it can guide and inform our future engagement and outreach that we really should be doing with the community. I think the growth and development question, it is a challenging one.
Yeah, I just think that there's, and I think we've heard it before, that that can be interpreted in many ways based on who's seeing the question. And when it's very broad like that, we don't necessarily get an idea of like, what are people thinking? What do they mean? What are, what like, you know, what are they actually feeling about that? And so I think that follow-up is going to be really important.
And that's why we're really proud of the multiple engagement efforts that have been happening with the CD and the comp plan. And so I think if we're doing our job strategically, we look at all the different engagement efforts and hopefully start to link them all together, compare them against one another.
Sounds good. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was really helpful. I'm going to piggyback off of what Councilmember Zorn said and ask if we have the data even down to like more of a neighborhood level, like the defined neighborhoods? Because I think about like, the mayor always jokes that we're the Snohomies, Councilmember Manki and I, but we live in different parts of the Snohomish County, part of the city. I have transit, he doesn't. So there is a big chunk of the city that just isn't part of that transportation benefit district. So I would love to see if we can dial down on that because I think that'll really help us. There's just, despite the fact that it takes me 10 minutes to get to Jean's house or Carston's house and 15 maybe to Mason's house, like it's still like different challenges based on where you are. So I'd love to see it at that level, if possible. I don't know how much we collected, but.
Freya may correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we only asked for zip codes. I think we often don't ask for addresses, but I don't know, Freya, if you wanted to address that a little bit more?
Correct. Yes, we only have zip codes. I mean, to protect people's private information, we.
Totally. I would hesitate to put my address in on a survey, even being the recipient of the data. So I totally get that. It's interesting, I wonder if in the future, there'd be an option to give people like a map where we've defined the neighborhoods that we, you know, like, I think of that list that we see and just have people click like, I live here or say pass, but that's a future thing.
Well, and we actually have done that in some surveys. We actually give the neighborhoods as best that we define them and we sometimes do ask folks to opt in to their neighborhood. Yeah, it's a good idea.
Councilmember Curd.
Thanks. This is interesting information. Thank you for all the work that goes into this. I'm wondering how this response rate compares to previous versions of the budget survey? So we have sent out postcards before. I'm wondering if we're seeing more results now, like the engagement over time has been going up? If it's staying about the same or if it's going down?
We did this survey two years ago. We only mailed 5,000 postcards and we got about 900. And we did similar channel amplification. We did, we got about 900 responses. So we got a little bit more this time. We actually mailed 8,000 postcards though this time, but we did get a little bit more, 1,200.
Are there any like promotional items associated with filling out the survey that would maybe entice more people to not throw away the postcard?
We actually did do a gift card, enter to win, a $25 gift card drawing with this survey. So I don't know if that's what accounts, you know, potentially for a slightly higher response rate or maybe it's the fact that we mailed more postcards. I will say, we did conduct more intentional targeted engagement with this survey than we did two years ago. We did more outreach and engagement with the CBOs. We worked with the library. BOPAP Consejo actually did quite a bit of work for us within their Hispanic-speaking community. We also did more targeted outreach with renters. I mean, we contacted 15 different multifamily properties and asked them to promote the survey. We didn't see a huge increase in the number of renters that responded two years ago, but we know that outreach worked because right around that time, we got a spike in returns from renters. But it's lots of different things we try to make sure that we get a great and diverse response, so.
I appreciate that. Thanks for that.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Insightful, the information in the agenda packet was even more insightful. I enjoyed it. I'm a geek, so I like to do that stuff. The question I have is more higher, a higher level, is how are we combining this very short-term questions with what we want to do long-term? Because we do need to make long-term investments even the next two years. You know, even, we're doing through comp plan right now. We have a 2040 vision and all that stuff. We need to start implementing some of this stuff. How do you envision combining? How, how do you envision combining the results of this, what we get out of this survey and with the other engagement we're doing with, uh, for the other initiatives we have in the city?
Great question. This survey was primarily a budget survey, so we were really asking folks, what do you want to see the city invested in the next two years? But asking questions about satisfaction with city services, I would hope that staff would take that information and use that to guide some of our work moving forward. Because if we know, you know, what folks aren't really happy with, um, then that kind of gives us some information on what we should be doing, some more long-term planning and working on. Um, and I don't have a much better answer than that, but there are many different things that we look at and we, we try to use all of them, um, in our staff planning.
It'll be, maybe we can do a study session on this stuff, perhaps, to look at how this information informs, because every, you, we're gonna do this every cycle, right? Every, by any-
I think all of you will be discussing the final report and all of this information in much greater detail in the retreat.
Oh, in the retreat, okay, cool. Oh, you could have said that in the beginning. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich.
I remembered another question that I had, um, and that is, I'm, I'm always, like, like the deputy mayor, I love data, um, and this is really interesting. And so, um, when thinking about demographics of the city, um, I'm wondering if, like, our kind of average, average survey participant, um, how similar that is to the, the voters of Bothell? And so I'm wondering if anybody here knows what the average age of voters in Bothell is? Um, because I think that might be hard to access data, uh, since we have the two counties and combining that together might be difficult to figure out.
I don't know that we have that immediately available on voter registration data, but perhaps we could research that and bring something back to you. I do want to really clarify that when we talk to different survey consultants, uh, we're always asked, would you like to survey voters only or your entire community? It was really important for us in this survey to survey the entire community. And when we get the results back, we've done a lot of analysis already on the demographics and, and what they look like and do they really fully represent our community? And, and there are a few things, I will tell you, um, our Hispanic response rate is a little bit lower than what we actually see in our community. And so that's something we're thinking about. Most of the other demographic representation was really, really close to our census data, but I don't know about voter registration data, so that's something we can follow up on.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm, like, I'm also noticing that, of course, um, we didn't have a whole lot of youth participate in the survey and I know that we have a sizable percentage of our, of our population is young people. Um, and, and so that's partly why I'm asking about voters, is because voters have to be over the age of 18. And, and our data set is mostly over the age of 18. Um, and so it's not, but you're right, the, exactly the point of not every person who lives in Bothell is a voter. And it's so, it's so important and necessary to not exclude people based on their, their citizenship or if they are voter or not. And so, um, I'm really glad that you do that. I just, I'm trying to understand, like, if we just are thinking about the adults in Bothell, like, who is our average adult?
Yeah.
And are we really, like, does the survey achieve targeting our average adult in Bothell? So that's partly why I'm asking the question, to understand that.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. The information itself is really interesting and I guess most of the questions that I have and a lot that I've heard, um, up here on the dais are about how to interpret that data. Because like, the data is one thing, but the story it tells is something very different. So I guess that's where I would, uh, I would lean on our doctors, uh, to tell us what questions we should be asking and like what this information means. Um, I, I share, uh, councilmembers, Councilmember Aldrich's desire to, like, give us a comparison. You know, when you look at the median age of the respondent, it looks about 20 years older than the median age of person in the city. The homeownership rate looks about 20% higher. The income seems to skew pretty high as well. Like, it seems like we're getting a pretty consistent profile that responds to it, which makes sense, because it's generally gonna be a profile that has a little bit more spare time and ability to respond to something like this. Um, but I would love to know on a lot of this information, like, I guess it would help me interpret it, just to say, hey, what's normal? Like, we've got the, you know, the spread of income for survey respondents, what's the overall spread of income in Bothell? Like, and is there a way we can take the information that we get in this and sort of compile that to say, like, if we weight this so that it is the median characteristic or median person in Bothell, like, this is what it would look like? Like, if we did truly get a good representative responding? I'll pause for a second in case anybody has anything to say before I just keep talking.
No, I think those are great points. We actually went through quite a bit of the data and the demographics line by line. And I know the age, uh, of their responses is very closely aligned to the demographic age of our community. And so, and I think there's several other areas that they've actually taken a look at to study.
Okay.
And they're pretty close. I did say that about the Hispanic population. I think we need to do a better job there. Um, we, uh, took a look at the, there was 51% of the, just some interesting things. 51% of the responses, uh, were submitted by women and our Bothell population is 50.4% of women. And one of the interesting things that researcher shared with me is that that's pretty, it's pretty standard for women to, uh, create or to complete the survey on behalf of their household. So that's pretty normal, but it also was pretty close to our own demographics. I don't know as much about the income. I think there might be a little bit more study of that, um, in the final report, but those are all great questions.
I really appreciated, uh, there was a chart in the packet that talked about positive and negative correlations based on demographic information. Um, that was, to me, really, really helpful. Um, the last thing that, um, I'm interested in is like, all of the numbers about satisfaction in Bothell, like, I don't know how to baseline that. Like, what's normal? Like, when you do a study of a city, like, like, I can't imagine there's gonna be that many cities out there that have a super high percentage of people that like, say they really hate living there, because like, they'd move. Um, so I guess, like, I, I'm curious to know, like, how are we doing compared to normal? What's normal?
Well, we'll let the researchers tell us later about that, but what I can tell you is I'm really old and I've been around for a long time. And if you have 81% of your community that says they really love being here and love living here, that's really, really great.
I'll take it. Awesome. That's all I've got. I think, uh, I think we're good.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
PR.
And thank you, PR.
Mayor, I have one more staff report for you this evening.
Yes.
I have one more staff report for you this evening.
Yep.
And we have a brief presentation. This will take us a few minutes. Uh, Boyd Benson, our Utilities and Development Services Manager is here and will spend just a minute talking about inflow and infiltration. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Erin and Boyd.
I have to say, I'm already excited with all the props.
Good evening, your council. Boyd, your microphone.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Boyd Benson, Utilities Development Services Manager with Erin Lenhart, Public Works Director.
Hey, Boyd. You should point the microphone at your mouth now. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Boyd Benson, Utilities Development Services Manager with Public Works Director, Erin Lenhart. We'll try to make this really brief, but we wanted to present some information to council. Uh, this information is being presented to inform you of some regional discussions with respect to regional wastewater treatment. City of Bothell, uh, sewage from the King County side goes the, um, King County wastewater treatment, uh, system, as well as Snohomish County through Alderwood. So this is kind of timely. We're talking about nutrient loading within Puget Sound and INI directly relates to that story. So once again, no actions being requested. This is just a brief overview. So what is inflow and infiltration? Um, it is water that shouldn't be getting into sewer mains that, that does. And this can be from inflow from connections from downspouts that shouldn't be connected or infiltration from groundwater. So the upper graphic kind of shows that, you know, in older sewer mains within the city, it was concrete three-foot section with no gaskets. It wasn't a bad thing to have groundwater get into the sewer system. Um, in some areas of the city, you might find downspouts connected. So it was, it was something in the past, but in the last 10, 20 years, it's become more of an issue, because as we see more inflow and infiltration of the regional wastewater treatment, that increases overall burden to the treatment plants. Um, so it costs more to treat that excess water, which could be pretty high with respect to, um, up to 75% from inflow infiltration on storms, at least based on King County. And then it is also, if you can't treat it, you can have overflows into Puget Sound and that adds nutrients and does impact the environment. And the last one is, if you're treating more water, you're paying larger rates. And so we're really keen on the rates. Um, the little graphic, uh, that on the bottom, if you have a rainstorm, the upper little blue bars, you'll see a time lag and then you may see increased sewer flow. And, um, if you're in an area with high groundwater and poorly functioning pipes, you may see that as a base flow that occurs over time continuously. So this is, um, just a, a kind of summary plot to kind of help explain what happens. What our consultant is doing is looking at the rainfall, looking at our base use water, which should be going down sewer, and then looking at the difference between those. So the upper graph, it's kind of inverted, but you can see the blue peaks, those are rainstorms. The middle graph, you can see the base flow, which is modeled on water usage as the, the dark line, it's linear. It kind of steps up and down and you can see what the sewer is actually seeing for total flow. And this is from flow meters. Uh, the city has four flow meters from King County within our system. So you can see the orange line that kind of pops up and down. And the green line on the bottom represents the percent of rainfall getting into the system. And it, it is, on big storms, you could see up to at least in our system, 23, 22%, which is much lower than King County when they say 75% during large storms. But still, it's, it's significant. And so this kind of helps you understand the, the rain-derived inflow, um, that's the percent of the rain getting in, um, and then the groundwater. And what's kind of cool is it seasonals as well, because you may expect that as you have cumulative storms in the winter, you see higher inflow base and also you typically have higher groundwater. So it kind of shows, the green line, it tapers off in, in the summer months and then picks back up in October. So what type of data are we looking at? We're looking at flow meters. We've separated the four basins within the, um, the city, um, the King County half that we're responsible for, um, based on the flow meters. And what's interesting is when you look at all the data, um, that's being looked at, it's pipe type, age, it's, it's documented flow, it's cracks, it's other types of issues, um, you can see that different basins work differently. So the basin that is probably the most problematic is the second one, the BOT 002, and that's the green on the left. And you'd kind of expect that. There's some portions of our sewer system in the lowlands, um, it's the older part of the city, you might expect more INI. And then when you get to newer portions of the city, um, and more on the uplands, let's say the, the BOT HW 087 to the far right, the east, we have less infiltration. So what type of other data is cool and why is this interesting to council? Well, one, it helps you understand the regional discussion about wastewater treatment and rates and INI. Two, it, it, it informs you of what it is. And three, the city is using some really innovative approaches. And one is using, um, a program called Sewer AI. And it's artificial intelligence, which is nothing special, it's just probabilities and understanding things and making routines. But what it does is it takes our video inspection data that we look at with our eyes and we rate with instruments and it actually does that work for us at a very low cost. And it finds all the defects and where we may look at five or 10 defects with our eyes when we review this video, it's looking at closer to 50 or 60. And it's mapping those defects for every pipe in the city where we have video. And it's really, really cool. So you may see infiltration, like at the far right, where water's actually coming into the system from groundwater. You may see structural damage, um, where you'd expect to see infiltration coming in from around the pipe and then roots, which helps us understand what's out there. So once again, we see this stuff on video, but with the Sewer AI program, it takes it, it analyzes it, it maps it, and it's good to go. So overall results and conclusions, what we are finalizing right now is understanding of the pipes in the city. We may only have video inspection for about 15% of the pipes within the city, but we can use that information to extrapolate our findings based on similar pipes, ages, um, groundwater conditions and the rest. So looking at all the data collectively, we can, we can generate a map of where we think we have issues that should be addressed. Um, the red ones are known replacement or repairs based on video or documented conditions. The orange ones are more, okay, uh, it's not so severe, so we could just monitor it or use cure and place pipe. And then the green ones are, things look pretty okay, or the pipes are of a certain type of construction that we're not too worried about it. So let's look at periodic inspections with video inspections. Once again, why are we doing this? To just kind of present this type of information to council, um, get you interested for the CFP and regional discussions, but it's also to understand the output. The, the products from this will inform the CFP directly, um, as we look at where we can do cure and place pipe. We're currently doing a project in Valhalla. Um, it'll inform future plans and budgets. We can look at this data and understand, okay, if we're over a 20-year span, what do we need to video? We can put a, a cost to that. These red ones that we need to repair or replace, we could put cost to that. So it really helps us understand how we can be part of the solution with respect to INI and treatment rates within our region. And I was trying to keep that less than 10 minutes. Cool. Um, and I have visual aids, uh, just to, to share. Um, so right now, we're doing cure and place pipe in Valhalla and that's this little guy down here. Uh, you can see there's quite a bit of red. This is old concrete pipe that was ungasketed, so you see, and it has high groundwater. So for the model, it actually, without them understanding we're doing this work, it popped this out as a high priority. So cure and place pipe is when you go to one sewer structure, a maintenance hole, and you insert a liner between that maintenance hole and a second maintenance hole. This is kind of stinky, so I stuck it in a bag. You pull the liner in, and the yellow is a protective coating. This gray is underneath the yellow. It's something that can take some pressure. So you insert this between the structures, you inflate it and it's something crazy, on the order of 100 PSI, which is a lot of air pressure. The pipe itself conforms to the shape, so we don't really care if, if there are chunks taken out of, or if there are gaps to the rest. This will actually smooth everything out. It'll seal up those gaps. And then once this is inflated, um, you run a, a ultraviolet light train through there. And it basically results in a structural element that is as good or better than the original host pipe. And the reason we're keen on this is for the Valhalla project, if we were to do normal cut and replacement of these red sewer mains, we'd be looking on the order of $800 a foot. For this, it's $84 of linear foot, which is great, because instead of paying $5 million, you're paying $500,000. So we think it's a really good approach and that's it. And if I had not eaten such a big lunch, I would stand on this to demonstrate it's really strong, but now I'm worried I'll crush it and make a mess. And that's it. So this is just to prevent, present information to help you, inform you. And once again, the message takeaway, I would say, is if you're speaking to others and they start talking about high treatment rates in King County, which will double at least by 2033, and that's something that we, has to be passed on the rate payers. And if they have to construct a new wastewater treatment plant, the numbers are crazy. It's four or five-fold. Um, that we're, Bothell's doing its part to reduce total flow to the treatment system, reduce INI and being part of the solution to keep rates down. Anything to add? Tricel and Hart.
I'll try to keep my questions under, I was gonna say one minute, two minutes. Um, uh, when you extrapolate and you see these areas that, um, look like they could be at a crisis point, do you go out and physically check them and, and, and assess how good or bad they are?
Um, yes and no. So the ones where they're, they're based on video, which we know, and what's cool about this is you can basically click on that map, it'll bring the video up, which is nice. Um, those, we just know that they have to be addressed.
Just, you don't even have to look at it, you know?
We don't. I mean, it would still be evaluated as part of any project. The ones that are replacement because they have similar type pipe, pipe type, groundwater or the rest, we, we definitely be checking those, because we want to make sure we prioritize where we do this work. And just to add on to that comment, this is something that whenever we do a streets project or a different utility project, we're looking at opportunities to do this work. So, um, there is some sewer that's being abandoned or repaired as part of the 185th project. Uh, you'll see the same thing with Bothell Way. So we're always looking for a way to, to find opportunities to keep the costs down and also to only just- for a way to find opportunities to keep the costs down, and also to only disrupt a corridor one time instead of, let's go fix utilities and let's go overlay and the rest. So I hope that. And then we try to kind of bunch things around those areas to get economy to scale.
Okay. That liner is genius. Whoever thought it, I hope they can afford good vacations now. Couple other quick questions. Groundwater infiltration, does that tend to go down with when we build more and waters going more into stormwater?
That's a really good question. So quite often, we talk about building more in development. It may not be that the groundwater changes, but when you redevelop a site, you're developing to current standards, which are gasketed pipes and low-flow toilets. So quite often, you see development or redevelopment, you see a net reduction in water use and sewer generation. So it's a good way to make sure that projects mitigate their impacts.
Okay. All right. And then the, this is a dumb question, because I feel like I should know it for a lot of reasons. Infiltration on our clean water, is that less of a concern because of pressure in the water pipes, or is that also a concern?
It's not a concern. If it wasn't a concern, we'd be at risk for health violations. But I will say exfiltration from the water system is a concern, because water systems, distribution systems leak. In Washington State, if you go over 10% leakage, you get put on notice because it's a waste of a resource. City of Bothell has a rolling average of 3.5%, 4%. So we're doing well.
So you worry more about water going out than coming in to where our clean water is?
Correct, yeah, these pressured systems.
And is that because there's so much water already in the system that it tends to, you tend not to get outside water into the clean water?
Mostly that for our water distribution system, we want to make sure it is potable water only, it's under pressure, and there's very little chance of backflow or suction into the water main. And that's our main goal, is to make sure that only good potable water, sufficient flow and quality and pressure is in our water main. So we're in good shape.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, you guys have really upped your game with these presentations. Like, there's video, and there's props. And this is, it's really exciting to see this presentation. And, you know, it's, and most of the time, people aren't like, oh, yeah, water, how it goes underground is the most exciting thing. But somehow you make it happen. And you really have brought this to life for us in a way that typically I don't think many staff members would even know how to do. So thank you. I am impressed at the relatively low amount of red that I see on the map. I don't know what page this is, I'm sorry. But on the overall results and conclusions. And it sounds like you have a good kind of plan to address those things. And I'm wondering, is there a, is there like a timeframe that you see to turn all that red to something else, probably to green, not to yellow?
Within the next 10 to 20 years would be ideal. The valuation, and this is actually, it's a company out of North Carolina, they do this all over the nation. It's really cool. This is cutting-edge stuff. Bothell does neat things. But it really depends on cost. So this is my favorite thing in the world. If we could reline all the old sewers in the city at a 10th of the cost of replacement, and without disrupting traffic or roads. So some of those reds will probably turn orange. They're much more conservative than us. We have pipes within Valhalla that are cracked and partially damaged or missing bottoms. And we don't care. Once this is in it, we'll do as good as a new pipe. It may not be exactly round, but it conveys sewage. So we think we can address these things much more rapidly than the 20-year plan to take care of the red. That would be our goal. And we plan to update this study every five years to help document that we are doing our part to help reduce total flows to the regional wastewater treatment system.
Great. And it sounds like that when we consider the capital facilities plan, we'll start to be able to kind of figure out what that timeframe looks like, and how much of the work we can do it in each given time, like planning horizon. And then I also just want to say that at the open house last weekend, I got on my, like, I'm a big fan of water and civilization, and how civilization, like, yeah, water is life. And it's also, and civilization and cities are actually what create us, like, the ability for us to thrive as humans. And so I just want you to know, and I said this to Boyd, and I felt like he gave me the Paul It's from the Great British Baking Show.
You gotta explain that one.
I don't have to explain that, okay.
You can tell in the audience who doesn't need to have it explained, I will just say.
Right. On the Great British Baking Show, there's a judge who gives a handshake to people when they do a good job. And like, when they do like an exceptionally good job. He's a very tough judge. Anyway, and so I was telling, just Boyd, how important to me water systems are, because I really think that, like, our civilization is built on it. And then he gave me this handshake, and it felt very special. And so, thank you.
Boyd's approval is something we are all striving for, I understand.
I got the Boyd handshake. You guys, good luck.
Pretty big deal. Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I feel like I should have talked about water. We talked about earthquakes at the open house, Boyd and I. Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions about this topic that haven't been covered by my colleagues, but I do wonder, even though we don't manage the utility, if we have a view on the Snohomish County part of the city and the part of the city that uses utility we don't manage, and how that's all doing, just to know. I don't expect the same level, because I know you're not out commissioning that work, but do we have those somewhere?
Yeah, a real quick response on that. The Alderwood's director is actually the chair of MUPAC, which is the, it's not a governing body, but it's a consortium of folks that send wastewater to King County for treatment. So he is very aware of this. And this presentation had an additional 12 slides, and we've cut them all for the briefing, which is fine. It wasn't that necessary. But we did share that presentation with Alderwood, with our consultant, because this is that cool to be able to get a project completed at this low of a cost. So I can't say they're doing that, but they are very aware, and they're very aware of the future potential rate increases with respect to excess flow into future sound and how INI reductions can take care of that.
I would just also say, and I'm guessing Boyd is just forgetting at the moment, but we partner with Alderwood on our cure-and-place pipe project. So.
Yes.
Okay. I always wonder, too, I had heard from a little bird, whose name is Councilmember Kerd, about that there's a lot more septic systems in Snohomish County, and that older ones can be pretty harmful to the environment. And I would love to someday, and I don't know if this is on you, Boyd, but I just, I wonder if we can get a good picture of sort of the health across the city, you know, across different system types, just to understand kind of where we're at. And there's not, like, we're not going to go replace a septic system. I do understand that. But just to see kind of pain points aside from the ones on this report. And I love that we have a plan for this, and that we have such a good, I'm going to say, affordable product, just in comparison to other options. But that's great. I do wonder about that holistic perspective, too, sometimes.
Yeah. So the city has mapped drain fields within both our retail service area and Alderwood's. So we understand where those are. For the city side, we do have a sewer extension program to try to bring mains out to those areas where we don't expect redevelopment. So we're trying to attack that. For Alderwood, there are areas that are very challenged to serve in their retail service area. And they are working actually hand-in-hand with developers to take care of some of those. One big drainage basin on 240th near 7th. So they're aware of the issue, and our code prevents new drain fields if there are options and the rest. So they're good partners.
Totally, totally. And again, I appreciate the update on the city utility. Just gave me an adjacent question. But I don't want to go over the two minutes standard. So
I don't have any questions or statements that have not already been said. So I will just say thank you very much. We appreciated the presentation. It's normal. All right. Next up is projected agenda discussion, as long as I'm reading the right page this time. Does anybody have anything that they would like to bring up? Seeing none. Well, I would love for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Dodd?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Aldrich to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornes?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Kerd?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Keeber?
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Manke absent.
Fantastic. All right. One more time, this time with feeling. Our first agenda bill of the night is 24074, resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract to maintain the McAdoo property in accordance with the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks. I'm just going to say city manager, because it's just, that's what I'm used to.
Very well, sir. Don't call deputy city manager this evening. Tonight, we have Jason Greenspan, our Director of Community Development, and Adam Alsobrook, our Landmark Preservation Board Consultant, are here to talk about something that doesn't happen very often here in the city of Bothell. The Landmark Preservation Board has authorized and approved an additional home to our landmark preservation. And the Director Greenspan and Mr. Alsobrook are here to take us through what that is and the action that you'll need to do this evening. So with that, Director?
Thanks very much. I have to say that Public Works has really upped the ante. I don't have any props or secret handshakes. I could do an interpretive dance. But I think what I'm going to do instead is just present on a really interesting and important topic. We are asking the city council to consider approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract to maintain the McAdoo property in accordance with the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks. Next slide. We were contacted in July of last year by the then-property owners of 17823 88th Avenue Northeast in the West Hill neighborhood. They were seeking to nominate their property and their house to the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks. And this property contains what is commonly referred to as the McAdoo House, which is a residential home that was designed and constructed in the late 1950s by Benjamin McAdoo. And he is the first Black American registered to practice architecture in Washington State. And although the property has been on the city's inventory of historic resources since at least 2011, our city code requires the property owner to consent to place it on and elevate it to the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks. Now, the property has changed hands since it was first nominated, and we do have the current owner's authorization to proceed this evening and request your authorization. The Landmarks Preservation Board approved the nomination of the property in September of 2023 after conducting a public hearing. And placing this property on the register requires a maintenance agreement between the city and the property owner, and that's going to act as a covenant that governs exterior modifications, rehabilitation, things of that nature, that would preserve the building's architectural integrity. Now, Adam Alsobrook, our consultant from Willamette Cultural Resources Associates, is here this evening, and he's going to present to you on the cultural and architectural significance of the property.
And Great British Baking Show enthusiast, I am assuming.
Yes, absolutely. My greatly expanded midsection probably belies the fact that I liked baked goods. I would like to thank you, Director Greenspan. I would like to thank the Bothell City Council for inviting me to speak this evening. I am Senior Architectural Historian at Willamette Cultural Resources Associates. We support the city of Bothell's historic preservation program under an on-call contract with the city. And we've been in that role for about a year now. Next slide, please. There we go. Thank you. Benjamin F. McAdoo Jr. was born October the 29th, 1920, in Pasadena, California, where he graduated from high school in 1938. He briefly attended Pasadena Junior College and the University of Southern California before working at various architectural firms in Los Angeles. Between 1942 and 1943, he worked for the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and then the Kaiser shipyards, before moving to Seattle in 1944. McAdoo earned his bachelor's degree in architecture from the University of Washington in 1946. In October 1946, he became the first Black architect licensed to practice architecture in Washington State. After working for Seattle architects James Chiarelli and Paul Kirk between 1946 and '47, McAdoo opened a private practice in Seattle in 1947. McAdoo moved his practice to Bothell in 1958 after completing his family's residence at 17823 88th Avenue in Bothell. Next slide, please. This is a photograph of the McAdoo House at 17823 88th Avenue Northeast in Bothell. This is the front of the house. The smaller black and white photograph is the King County Tax Assessor's photograph of the house taken in 1958. So, you know, we've got really, really great documentation on this house, thanks to those tax assessor photos. Next slide, please. This is the rear of the McAdoo House. The smaller black and white photograph is the King County Tax Assessor's photograph of the house, also taken in 1958. It was, we really kind of lucked out in this. To have both the front and the back of a residential building documented by the King County Assessor is really quite, we were very lucky, you know, from a documentation standpoint. Next slide, please. McAdoo also designed several other buildings in Bothell, including the Green Residence at 18334 94th Avenue Northeast, which was completed in 1960. The Bothell First Baptist Church at 19527 104th Avenue Northeast, also completed in 1960. And the Marshall Paris Building, also completed in 1960 at 18041 Bothell Way Northeast before being demolished in 2014. The Marshall Paris Building was also where McAdoo had his office for a period of time. Next slide, please. After McAdoo and his immediate family left Bothell about 1962, three extended family members, Freddie Braxton, Dorothy Johnson, and Clifford CP Johnson, owned the property from 1962 to 2023. Braxton and the Johnsons were career public educators who made a significant contribution to both Bothell and Seattle. In conclusion, in September 2023, the Bothell Landmark Preservation Board voted unanimously to nominate the McAdoo House to the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks due to both its architectural significance and close association with Benjamin F. McAdoo Jr. Thank you again for inviting me to speak this evening.
And with that, we'll conclude, and again, ask the city council for considering your authorization to authorize a contract or authorize the city manager to sign a contract to maintain the McAdoo property in accordance with our Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Before I make that motion, which I would be happy to, I just want to thank you for bringing this to council and to share with the community just how influential and historic it is to be able to honor McAdoo, Benjamin McAdoo. And we haven't even gotten into his community service either. We're just talking about his architectural contributions to our community and to the state. And my understanding is that he was very involved in the civil rights movement in the Seattle area in the 1960s, including being a president of, was it the NAACP, or was it the ACLU chapter?
Oh, my gosh, you're putting me on the spot right now. I dare not answer that question, having not read the nomination in quite some time. I should know that. But I did want to direct you to the nomination. If you are so inclined, there's a ton of biographical information on McAdoo in the nomination document, which is available on the city's website under current nominations, under the Landmark Board webpage.
Great, thank you. And I wonder if that's something that we could possibly, like, a biography to like the DEI page, perhaps, on the city?
We certainly can work with DEI to think about that. And we did look it up. Hang on just a second.
It's the NAACP.
NAACP. Okay. I was worried I was going to be wrong. But thank you for confirming
that. Yeah, really, this is a really special event. And I'm glad it didn't just get put onto a consent agenda that we could, as a community, learn together. And so with that... And so with that, can I motion?
No, no, no.
Okay. Not yet.
And I will also say that on the city of Bothell website, we had a news flash on February 3rd, 2022, that was like the life of Benjamin McAdoo. So if we want to put it on a different page, there's already something there.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers Orns?
I'll be fast and then, and then she can make her motion. First off, McAdoo, really cool last name. I wish that we would have something in the city that would give us an occasion to say it more often. Anyway, every now and then last names are just, are, I enjoy and McAdoo is one of them. The written history that we got in our packet, oh my word. I'm sure someone's grateful for the days of Google because back in my day, this would be Herculean to put all that together. I do have, well, and then I also have a comment. I, I will confess and just make it public record, but it's not necessary. This housing style, not my jam. My folks would have loved it. My engineering husband would like, love it. And I grew to appreciate in, in the packet, the details of why and how that was to create, you know, where it could support a house was, I was like, oh my goodness, I can see why they had fun figuring out how to build houses out of that. Any rate, and Marshall Paris, that's, that building used to be a landmark, but now we still have McAdoo's house, so that's good. I, I do have one question. There's a covenant that's going to be created between the city and the current homeowner. How, are there any guarantees of preserving the house? Does a city ever come in and give assistance in helping the current homeowner keep preservation on that property? What, what is that when the rubber meets the road? What does that covenant look like?
So, you know, first and foremost, you know, once the agreement, once the contractual agreement is made between the city of Bothell and the property owner, it is recorded with the county recorder's office, and in this case it'll be the King County Recorder's Office, and it runs with the land. And so once that, once that designation is in place, you know, it can only be removed, you know, through very great Herculean effort on the, you know, on the part of the council, actually. I think it would, the council would have to do that. But that being said, the, the city provides technical assistance, you know, to the property owners of landmark properties. And then, you know, the Landmark Preservation Board has to approve, you know, all of the changes henceforth to the property, including, you know, generally everything except for maintenance, you know, routine maintenance accepted. Changes have to be reviewed because the entire tax parcel is covered.
Okay. And probably the only way the city would be purposefully aware of the condition of that house is when it would change ownership, maybe. And someone would, you know, call attention to, they'd be aware of this covenant and that would, they would call attention to it. But I can't imagine that, you know, there would be, you know, every five years we send somebody out to look at the house, that kind of thing, that kind of monitoring the home.
I don't think we would anticipate monitoring whether there are alterations made. I mean, we have a pretty open permitting process that hopefully all property owners would avail themselves to for any kind of rehabilitation. And I think the maintenance agreement will be clear about what those responsibilities will be.
In addition, I mean, you just triggered another question. If someone wanted to do a modification on the house and go through permitting, that flag would come up on this property as well.
That's the case, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm not seeing anybody else, but I'm just going to say that this presentation is the first time that I realized the property was up for sale and sold last year. And I was like, ooh, there was an opportunity and I missed it. Bummer, because that would be a really cool place to live, because it's a really cool piece of property, that's a really amazing part of Bothell history. And this is one of the easier votes I've had in a while. So would anybody like to make that motion?
I called it, I guess. So I motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a contract to maintain property containing what is commonly referred to as the McAdoo House in accordance with the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks. A fully executed, do I need to read that part? Can I stop there? About the executed contract? Okay.
At least like read the whole thing.
At the advice of my lawyer. Fully executed contract will effectively designate the property as a historic landmark and place it on the BRHL.
Second?
I have a motion for the recommended action from Councilmember Aldrichs and a second from Councilmember Dodd. Wouldn't anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Orns?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Carra?
Yes.
Passes six zero with Councilmember Menke absent and excused.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. All right. Our last agenda item of the night is an executive session and a closed session about pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42301101I, expected to last one hour with no action. We will adjourn from executive session at 8:35 PM.